So, we've been talking about the subject of salvation for quite some time now. And I've really been blessed by it because it helped me to go back and revise what I already know on the subject. But also, I've been able to learn new things. And as I confess last, last time we met, it's so easy to take salvation for granted and it's so easy to think that you know it, you know? And yet, this subject is so deep, it's so wide, that it's not something we can cover in a couple of sessions. I thought we would, you know, get through it maybe in about four sessions, but that's not going to be the case. We're going to need much longer to really explore it. And that's because we want to do a thorough job, we want to go back to the Old Testament. We want to see how salvation was foretold, why they used mustard, for example. You know, and we can put ourselves in their shoes and see if we wouldn't have missed it ourselves. But we want to see what was foretold, then how it was fulfilled. We want to see maybe some aspects that we've overlooked because I think in most evangelical settings, salvation is just understood as a remedy for sin. It's something that helped us get into the kingdom of God and then to go to heaven, basically, that's what it is. But there's much more to salvation and there's a need for us to understand the depth of it. And the best way to go about it is to understand things from the Old Testament perspective. If we go back in time, see what was said, then come back and look at how it was fulfilled, we will understand it better. What we've been saying is that the prophet Isaiah is quite unique among the prophets in his focus on the salvation, the subject of salvation and of the Messiah. You know, Isaiah prophesied quite profusely by the birth of the Messiah. He prophesied his lineage, you know, his ancestry. He also prophesied about Jesus's forerunner, who, you know, was John the Baptist. And he, so many aspects of Jesus's whole coming was foreseen by the prophet Isaiah. And rather than just gloss over it, we're going to try and examine that, you know, more critically. Okay. Last week, we had, you know, we talked about the different prophets. Micah, for example, how, I'm not quite sure if we mentioned Micah and Jeremiah. And I remember briefly touching on David, okay? So today we are focusing on Isaiah. Isaiah prophesied about the forerunner of the Messiah. We all know this passage from Isaiah chapter forty verses three to four. "The voice of one crying in the wilderness, prepare the way of the Lord, make straight in the desert a highway for our God. Every valley shall be exalted, and every mountain and hill brought low; the crooked places shall be made straight, and the rough places smooth." Isaiah forty verses three to four. This passage, we recognize as being the same one that John the Baptist quoted when he was approached about his identity. Instead of simply telling them who he, he thought he was, instead of talking about his ancestry, talking about his father, et cetera, he didn't. He went straight to this passage. And that's because his ancestry really didn't matter. Who, you know, who his father was didn't matter. It was his mission that was of the essence. And he just took them to the passage in the Bible that foretold his mission. He's saying, you want to know who I am? Go and read Isaiah chapter forty, there it says that I'm the voice of one crying in the wilderness. Now, Isaiah, Jesus, in fact, the Old Testament talks about John the Baptist or that Jesus's forerunner coming in the spirit and the power of Elijah. And there are definitely similarities between Elijah and John the Baptist in the way they dressed, for example. Wearing camel's coat and, you know, eating wild honey, which is what John the Baptist, you know, was eating. And Isaiah, it was Isaiah, Elijah dressed similarly. They were both wild men, living in the wild, basically. And, and there's also something quite interesting about the way they broke onto the scene. We know about John the Baptist's birth because Luke wrote about it. But we know nothing about Elijah's birth, we don't know anything about his father, who his father was. We just know that he was of the inhabitants of Gilead and he was, yeah. What was he called? Elijah the Tishbite, yeah, from the inhabitants of Gilead. So he, that's all we know about Elijah. He just breaks onto the scene and it's almost like God is saying to you, it doesn't matter. Who, his ancestry doesn't matter, who he, none of that matters. What matters is the message that he has for the world. And you see a similar thing with, with John the Baptist, people wanting to know, who are you? You know, they came to him asking in John's Gospel, who are you? He said, you don't need to know who I am. "The voice of one crying in the wilderness, prepare ye the ways of the Lord." And let's read about it. "Now, in the fifteenth year of the reign of Tiberias Caesar, Pontius Pilate being governor of Judea, Herod being Tetrac of Galilee, his brother Philip, Tetrac of Aeturia, and the region of Traconitis, and Licinius, Tetrac of Abilene. While Annas and Caiphas were high priests, the word of God came to John, the son of Zacharias, in the wilderness." Now, I want to pause and just draw your attention to something here. There are four gospels in the Bible, Matthew, Mark, Luke and John. None of the, you know, the authors pay such attention to detail in terms of the context. You see, clearly Luke was writing his gospel for someone who had, who was a critical thinker, if I may put it this way. Who would ask questions? If you're telling me thirty years after the fact, about or twenty years after the fact, whenever he wrote it, if you're telling me about somebody that you say is a historical figure, he actually lived. There was such a person as Jesus, such a person as John the Baptist. Give me some historical context. And we know that Luke's gospel was written well, like, and written instructions from Luke to somebody called Theophilus, whom you would imagine was kind of, he was discipling or he was, yeah, you could say he was discipling. And he said, you know, I'm writing down this orderly account so that when you read it, you may know of the certainty of the things in which you've already been instructed. In other words, he knew this guy quite well, he knew what this guy had already been instructed of him. But instead of just that word of mouth, the message that had been given to him, Luke said, "I'm going to write down an orderly account of everything that happened, which is the basis for our belief system, so that you may know with a surety that these things are facts." And to be able to do that, what did he have to do? He needed to bring in the historical context. So what does he tell us? Tiberius Caesar was the Roman emperor at the time. Pontius Pilate was the governor of Judea. Herod was the Tetrac, you know, the Tetrac of Galilee. His brother Philip, because they had divided the territory into four parts. So each person was ruling over a Tetrac, a Tetrac king, and was, you know, given the title of a Tetrac. So, and he says, Philip was the Tetrac of Aeturia and the region of Traconitis, Licinius, the Tetrac of Abilene. At that time, the word of God came to John, the son of Zacharias, in the wilderness. And he went into all the region around the Jordan, preaching a baptism of repentance for the remission of sins, as it is written in the book of the words of Isaiah the prophet, saying, "The voice of one crying in the wilderness, prepare the way of the Lord, make his path straight; every valley shall be filled, and every mountain and hill brought low; the crooked places shall be made straight, and the rough ways smooth; and all flesh shall see the salvation of God." Luke three, one to five. So I like Luke's gospel for, you know, different reasons. I like each of the gospels, but gospels, you know, I love John's gospel for something else altogether. But I like Luke's attention to detail, that he was writing to somebody and you could tell that he was trying to answer questions that could have arisen in the mind of that person. He knew the person, he knew that person's need, and he wrote the gospel so that, in order to answer those questions, bringing in all the historical information needed. Isaiah prophesied about the Messiah's ancestry. He said, "There shall come forth a rod from the stem of Jesse, and a branch shall grow out of his roots." It's very interesting, the very sort of, the language that these prophets used, you know? A rod coming from the stem of Jesse. So Jesse being in almost like the tree and a rod branching out, which is essentially a branch. But then he says, "A branch shall grow out of his roots." So normally, in, I'm not, you know, an expert on this subject, but they often say that in Jewish poetry, it takes that they like to repeat. So they will say one statement, they'll make one statement, and then they will make another statement, but which is really a repetition of the first, but bringing in extra information in the second one. Yeah, so like in the Proverbs, you say, you read about, you know, six things the Lord hated. Yes, seven, as he something, something, then they would, so there are different ways of saying the same thing. Yeah, so the rod from the stem of Jesse, and here he says, "A branch shall grow out of his roots. The spirit of the Lord shall rest upon him, the spirit of wisdom and understanding, the spirit of counsel and might, the spirit of knowledge, and of the fear of the Lord. His delight is in the fear of the Lord, and he shall not judge by the sight of his eyes, nor decide by the hearing of his ears; but with righteousness he shall judge the poor, and decide with equity for the meek of the earth. He shall strike the earth with the rod of his mouth, and with the breath of his lips he shall slay the wicked. Righteousness shall be the belt of his loins, and faithfulness the belt of his waist." Isaiah eleven, one to five. Please notice something here. There is a prophetic jump. So Isaiah begins by telling us something about Jesse, by the way, was David's father, okay? And the Messiah was always linked to David. But here, Isaiah goes further and talks about Jesse. Now, he starts to describe Jesus's ministry. The fact that he walked in the fear of the, fear of the Lord, the fact that he will not judge by the sight of his eyes. In other words, he will not lean on his own understanding, human understanding, I should put it that way. But rather, he will judge with righteousness because he will hear directly from his father. Jesus himself said, "As the father does, and whatever he sees the father doing, that's what he does." So he will not judge by human judgment, where, you know, based on what you see, hear, feel, taste, you know, smell, but rather by the insight that the Lord gives. But then, and then he talks about how he will decide with equity for the meek of the earth, you know? So in other words, a defender of the poor. But then he says, "He shall strike the earth with the rod of his mouth." Then you wonder, when did Jesus do that, when he was on earth? "And with the breath of his lips he shall slay the wicked." We know for a fact, he didn't slay anybody when he was on earth. "Righteousness shall be the belt of his loins, and faithfulness the belt of his waist." So you can see clearly what Isaiah doing is lumping together two things. The first coming of Jesus and the second coming. This is what made it so difficult for the Jews of those days to accept Jesus as the Messiah because, and today, you know, because I do listen to, you know, Orthodox Jews, so from time to time, you know, I do listen to them. I do hear, just to hear their, you know, their perspective and what the challenge for them is in not being able to accept Jesus as the Messiah. And one of the things that they say, you know, like the very honest ones, they'll say, you know what? Maybe he fulfilled something, but we know for a fact that he did not fulfill all of the scriptures that have been written concerning him. He didn't fulfill, so he can't be the one. So as far as they were concerned, this prophecy was essentially one. It was one, and if it was one, then, you know, Jesus did not slay the wicked with his breath, you know? They were, and they are still expecting a conquering Messiah, okay? A conquering Messiah, not one that comes in weakness, but a conquering Messiah. And that's why they missed the second part. But this is a lesson unto us, that when you read prophecy, the Bible says, no prophetic word is by private interpretation. You cannot apply your own understanding to it. If it's a prophecy, it's a foretelling of something. So you need the mind of the person who foretold it. He needs to tell you from his own perspective what's happening. Now, let's look at some New Testament scriptures that are sort of a fulfillment of what Isaiah prophesied about the ancestry of Jesus. He said, "Now Jesus himself began his ministry at about thirty years of age, being as was supposed, the son of Joseph, the son of Heli, the son of Matat, the son of Levi, the son of Melchior, the son of Jonah, the son of Joseph, the son of Magathiah, the son of Amos, the son of Nehus, the son of Esli, the son of Nagai, the son of Mahach, the son of Magathiah, the son of Samiah, the son of Joseph, and the son of Judah. The sons of Jonas, the son, the son of, the son of Jonah, sorry, the son of Rezah, the son of Zerubabel, the son of Shelthiel, the son of Nerai, the son of Melchior, the son of Adi, the son of Cosum, the son of Emolde, the son of Eh, the son of Josie, the son of Eliza, the son of Joram, the son of Magath, the son of Levi, the son of Simeon, the son of Judah, the son of Joseph, the son of Jonan, the son of Eliakim, the son of Malia, the son of Menon, the son of Magathah, the son of Nathan, the son of David, the son of Jesse." So you can see what Luke has done is to trace Jesus's ancestry all the way to Jesse. Just as Isaiah prophesied that, you know, a root, a branch would grow out of the root of Jesse. Just a very sort of pictorial way of depicting Jesus's ancestry, Jesus's genealogy. Isaiah prophesied about the birth of the Messiah. Now, it came to pass in the days of Ahaz, the son of Jotham, the son of Uzziah, the king of Judah, that Rezen, king of Syria, and Pika, the son of Ramaliah, king of Israel, went up to Jerusalem to make war against it. So the context is this. Israel, after Solomon's death, his son Rehoboam took over as king in his father's dead. However, Rehoboam did away with his father's advisors and chose his own, his classmates, basically, as his own advisors. And they gave him very, very foolish advice, which he followed. And when he followed that advice, in actually increasing the tax burden on the people. Solomon, God had blessed him, but that was not good enough for him. He recharged the people heavily, took all their wealth. So guess what? The people were very overburdened and they literally sent a messenger to Rehoboam to say, you know what? Your father made things tough for us, but you lighten our burdens and we will serve you. But when he listened to his classmates, they said, "Look, my father, what my father did to you was nothing. We will do even worse, I will do even worse to you." Okay, he said, "Your father chastised you with briers, I'll chastise you with scorpions," something like that. So the people said, "Okay, to your tents, oh Israel, if that's the case, then you know what? You rule over Judah, but the rest of us, we are not, you know, paying allegiance to you." Rehoboam was not happy, he was going to go to war against them, and the prophet came up and told them, "Don't even try, it's not going to work." Because God actually was behind this thing because of the sins of Solomon. So in the end, the kingdom was broken into two parts. You had Judah and Benjamin, because it was, you know, closest and it was smallest, were kind of absorbed into Judah, and the northern tribes. You could actually say it was nine tribes, because Simeon used to be within Judah as well. So really, you could say nine tribes, but historically, everybody says ten tribes, ten plus two. So basically, what happened is, so once they split up, this king, you know, Pika, the son of Ramaliah, was king of those ten tribes. And he made a sort of an alliance with Rezen, the king of Syria, to come and attack Judah. So basically, they are brothers. In those days, the king in charge was called Ahaz. Now, Ahaz was not a good king, you know? This guy, God brought him victory, but, you know, instead of worshiping God, he then went and took the idol from the enemy that he defeated, he took their idol and brought it to come and worship. Anyway, so this is a time when Pika and Rezen wanted to attack Ahaz and his kingdom, the kingdom of Judah. And they sought help from the Lord. And that's when the Lord sent a message to Ahaz, saying, "Ask a sign for yourself from the Lord, your God. Ask it either in the depth or in the height above." So God is basically saying, you know what? I am going to, because I've not taken the whole context as a long passage, but basically, the Lord was saying, "I will bring you deliverance, I'll bring you deliverance, but you, and I'm asking you to give me a sign, which I will do, and then you will know that, you know, what I'm saying." I'm going to, you can have God, you know, how gracious God was being towards this king. It was not a particularly nice king. But Ahaz said, "I will not ask, nor will I test the Lord." Then he said, "Here now, oh you house of David, is it a small thing for you to worry men, to weary men? But will you weary my God also? Therefore the Lord himself will give you a sign. Behold, the virgin shall conceive and bear a son, and shall call his name Emmanuel." Isaiah seven, eleven to fourteen. So you see how interesting this is? God is asking Ahaz, "Give me, you know, you give me a sign." And Ahaz says, "No." The Lord said, "I'll give you a sign." And then the sign which the Lord gives him regarding the victory that was coming seemed to have nothing to do with the victory itself. Instead, it had something to do with what was going to happen in the future. This is one of the things that makes reading Old Testament prophecies quite confusing, you know? Because it's like, what's going on? So someone else will read it and say, "Okay, I don't see any relationship between this and that." And you people are claiming that this is Jesus, but you know, how do we know that this is referring to Jesus? By the way, if you go and read many other prophecies, the one by Micah and so many others, this prophetic word concerning the Messiah has been inserted into a bunch of other scriptures there. Because that's, that was God's wisdom, that's how he disguised truth. Because it was not given unto them, the prophets of those days were not giving unto them to have perfect understanding of the things that were coming into pass. Because you know what with humans, we like to try and fulfill God's word when we know exactly what's happening. So these guys were given the word to say, but they didn't have full understanding. And here you have the prophecy about the birth of the Messiah brought out in a completely different context. The prophecy is about Jesus's ministry. "The spirit of the Lord is upon me, because the Lord had anointed me to preach good tidings unto the meek. He has sent me to bind up the brokenhearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives, and the opening of prison to them that are bound, to proclaim the acceptable year of the Lord, and the day of vengeance of our God. To comfort all that mourn, to appoint unto them that mourning Zion, to give unto them beautiful ashes, the oil of joyful mourning, the garment of praise for the spirit of happiness, that they might be called trees of righteousness, the planting of the Lord, that he might be glorified." Isaiah sixty-one, one to three. So here, you've got Isaiah talking as though he was talking about himself. "The spirit of the Lord, God, is upon me," you know? But really, the Bible tells us in the New Testament, the spirit of Christ in them was, was the one, you know, speaking. Now, let's look at the fulfillment. So he came to Nazareth, this is from Luke chapter four, verse sixteen to twenty. "Jesus visited his hometown Nazareth. After he'd been to Jerusalem and other places and done miracles, and his fame was beginning to spread, he decided to pay his hometown a visit. So he came to Nazareth, where he had been brought up, and as his custom was, he went into the synagogue on the Sabbath day and stood up to read. And he was handed the book of the prophet Isaiah, and when he had opened the book, he found the place where it was written. "The spirit of the Lord is upon me, because he has anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor. He has sent me to heal the brokenhearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives, and recovery of sight to the blind, to set at liberty those who are oppressed, to proclaim the acceptable year of the Lord. Then he closed the book and gave it back to the attendant and sat down, and the eyes of all who were in the synagogue were fixed on him. And he began to say to them, 'Today this scripture is fulfilled in your hearing.'" Luke four, sixteen to twenty. So it's almost like Jesus went there just to, just to, I don't know how, or rather, the Holy Spirit orchestrated this whole event to show people that this was just a fulfillment of the scriptures. It's, it's, when you start studying the New Testament and start linking it up with the old, what you begin to discover is that God went through some really painstaking efforts to try and convince the Jews that, you know, Jesus was genuine, that this is he who was promised, you know? He ordered his steps to do stuff, stuff that were written verbatim in the Old Testament. So that if anybody was sincere and they opened the Bible, it should have, it should have been easy to tell. Which just goes to show you that when you are not sincere, if your heart is something already wrong with the way you will think, that's when discerning the truth becomes harder. But when you have an open heart, it's so much easier to discern the truth. Isaiah predicted peace between God and his people. "Comfort, yes, comfort my people, says your God. Speak comfort to Jerusalem and cry out to her that her warfare is ended, that her iniquity is pardoned, for she has received from the Lord's hand double for all her sins." Isaiah forty, one to two. By the way, this is the same passage that then goes on to talk about the voice of one crying in the wilderness. So you can see that first of all, the Lord begins to comfort his peoples, and then goes on to tell them about how this whole thing would unfold, it would begin with the voice of someone crying in the wilderness. Now, let's look at the fulfillment. "Now they were in the same country, shepherds, shepherds, living out in the fields, keeping watch over their flock by night. And behold, an angel of the Lord stood before them, and the glory of the Lord shone around them, and they were greatly afraid. Then the angels said to them, 'Do not be afraid, for behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy, which will be to all people. For there is born to you this day in the city of David a savior, who is Christ the Lord, and this will be a sign to you. You will find a baby wrapped in swaddling clothes, lying in a manger. And suddenly there was with the angel a multitude of the heavenly hosts praising God and saying, 'Glory to God in the highest, and on earth peace, goodwill toward man.'" Luke two, eight to fourteen. This is so important, you know? And this is so, it's important that we remember. Because sometimes, when you hear of some calamity somewhere, earthquake, maybe some natural disaster, the first thing that people think of is God's judgment, that God has brought his judgment on those people. Years back, when there was an earthquake in California, people say, "Oh, yes, because of all the sins in San Francisco and things like that, that's why this thing happened." Now, I remember one preacher who I really respect, talking about this subject and said, "If God wanted to judge sin on earth, do you think that he would stop in San Francisco or California, anywhere else? Do you not think that there's enough sin in your city, wherever you live right now, to attract God's judgment?" See, the thing is, we become a little bit selective when it comes See, the thing is, we become a little bit selective when it comes to God's judgment. We decide what we think is repulsive to God and therefore expect him to act on it. So when we see something happen there, we think, oh yes, now these people are getting it, you know? But the, when the, when Jesus was born, what did the angels do? They started rejoicing and praising God. What was the basis for praising God? Glory to God in the highest and on earth, peace, goodwill toward man. So what is peace? We all understand peace. But you can look at peace in two ways, you can talk about your own inner peace, but you can also talk about peace between warring parties. And this is far more, it, it, it makes more, far more sense when you look at it that way. Why were they talking about peace? Your inner peace, God doesn't control that. God offers peace. Philippians four eight tells us that, you know, um, from, from, Philippians chapter four, from, from verse five to verse eight, tells us about, be careful for nothing. But in all things in prayer, with prayers and supplication, we should make our request known to God, and the peace of God that passes understanding will fill our hearts and minds in Christ Jesus. So we know that that's possible, but the first instruction is that we should not be anxious about anything. In other words, God throws the ball back into your court. It's up to you to address the things that bring you anxiety. And when you tackle that, he promises his peace will fill your heart. So God begins by saying to you, fear not, because you have control over that. Or he tells you, don't be anxious, because you have control over that. He doesn't have direct control to just come and fill you with peace, even when you've decided to worry. You must first of all make a decision to lay the problems at his feet, then his peace will fill your heart, okay? So when it comes to your inner peace, you play a very, very important role here. But if you understand the angel, what the angel said about peace on earth, if you understand it in the context of what Isaiah said, in Isaiah forty one to two, then it begins to make sense. God says, speak comfort to Jerusalem and cry out to her that her warfare is ended. He's talking about peace between warring parties, because, because of sin. Man was an enemy, God's enemy, that, that, that Ephesians, in Paul, in his letters, letter to Ephesians talks about it, you know, writes about it. That we were enemies of God in our minds. But God says, God declares unilateral peace. This is not a peace treaty negotiated with God, no. Because his son took the judgment of the cross, he could unilaterally offer us peace. And that's what he's done, he's offered us peace, that's peace on earth. And then he doesn't stop there, he says goodwill toward man. What is goodwill? You know, I, I picture it as God's heart filled with goodness, good things. He says, I know the thoughts that I have towards you, thoughts of good and not evil, you know, to give you unexpected aid. So what we're talking about is God's heart filled with goodness, goodwill, which he then makes available to mankind. This was what the angels were rejoicing about, okay? So our salvation, if God was saying to people, I am extended, this is a unilateral peace, I mean, there's war between Russia and Ukraine right now. Imagine Putin waking up one morning and declaring unilateral ceasefire, that you know what? It's over, I'm not going to do this anymore, I'm, I'm marching my troops back home. Would there be peace in Ukraine or not? Of course there'd be peace, because the aggressor has decided to pull out. You know, now I'm not calling God an aggressor here, but we owed him, we are sent, therefore he had the right to punish us, but because the punishment was laid upon Christ, he's given us peace, unilateral. Unilaterally, he's saying, the warfare is ended, the warfare is ended. Peace and goodwill are what, and goodwill means more than just the peace. Now he can channel his grace into your life, all obstacles have been removed. Now the only obstacle that hasn't been removed is you. You, you are the last obstacle and he can't remove you, you have to get out of the way, get out of the way so that your, God's grace can flow into, into your life without any obstructions, as it were. Good. Now Isaiah, more than any of the Old Testament prophets, prophesied about a twist in the salvation message, and there is a twist in the salvation message, I hinted about it earlier. You know, one of the twists is that Isaiah lumped the first coming and the second coming together. So the, the, one of the twists is that there were two coming. Okay, Jesus wasn't just coming once, he was coming twice. And if we are going to be pedantic, he is coming three times, because he is coming in the rapture, but he will not settle on the ground, so they will not see him, they will, he will only be seen by his disciples, by believers who are waiting for his return, and they'll be caught up to meet him in the, in the air and will be forever with the Lord. So, but then he will come properly this time with the raptured believers, you know, and that will be the proper second coming, okay? Now, in the Old Testament, the first and the second coming, they are lumped together, so that people just couldn't tell that they were two separate events. So that's one twist. But the other twist in the salvation message, and now we're going to be looking at the next one. Now I got this image, um, just to stir your imagination a little bit, and the passage next to it. The Lord has made bare his holy arm in the eyes of all the nations, and all the ends of the earth shall see the salvation of our God, Isaiah fifty two ten. God has what made bare his arm, his holy arm. Now, what kind of imagery do you get when you, when you hear something like that? When somebody lays bare his holy arm, his arm, what do you think he's getting ready to do? Of course he's getting ready to fight. And he says, God has laid bare his arm in the, you know, uh, in the eyes of all the nations. And all the ends of the earth shall see the salvation of our God. And then that, imagine reading this in Isaiah's day or even later, but you know, certainly before Christ coming. What would you be expecting? God is coming to save us, because he's talking about salvation, and he's coming with a bare arm. He's coming ready for a fight. Let's read some other scriptures that refer to the arm of the Lord. The Lord has made bare his holy arm, that's one we just read, in the eyes of all the nations, and all the ends of the earth shall see the salvation of our God, Isaiah fifty two ten. And the Lord brought us forth out of Egypt with a mighty hand and with an outstretched arm, and with great terribleness, and with signs and with wonders, Deuteronomy twenty six eight. And I myself will fight against you with an outstretched hand and with a strong arm, even in anger and in fury and in great wrath, Jeremiah twenty one five. I have made the earth with the man and the beast that are upon the ground, by my great power and my outstretched arm, and have given it to whom it seemed to meet unto me, Jeremiah twenty seven five. What you are seeing is that in all these passages, God is talking about his outstretched arm or his bare arm, and he uses the imagery just to paint the picture of something that was done with great power and force. Great power and force. When he came, when he brought the Israelites out of Egypt to the promised land, he said he did it with our strength, um, and when you read the, you know, the, the story itself in Exodus, you, you, you have no questions about that. The ten plates of, of, uh, of Egypt, especially the last one, then how he led them through the wilderness, how he, he made it possible for them to cross the Red Sea on dry ground. All of that points to a mighty display of the power of God. So the concept of the stretched, outstretched arm makes sense. But how do you link this outstretched arm or bare arms, this display of power, how do you link that, how do you square that with the message of salvation? Because it says in Isaiah fifty two ten, that we shall see the salvation. And he is coming with his bare arms, we shall see the salvation of the Lord. One way of understanding it is that it's referring to Jesus' second coming, when he is coming with great power. But another way of understanding is that this salvation, it doesn't, when you keep reading about salvation in the Old Testament, isn't, isn't just referring to that, that last battle that will lead to, you know, um, Israel, Israel being saved from the, the hand of the Antichrist. But it's also relating to our salvation. When Zechariah, John the Baptist's father, prophesied, you know, he, you know that he got, you know, he was made, um, dumb after he, he said the wrong things in the temple, and but when his son was born, his mouth was opened and he was able to talk. And the first thing he did was he started prophesying, he prophesied about a salvation that was coming. So this salvation is the same salvation, and yet God says, I'm coming with the holy arm. You see, when Jesus was on earth, performing miracles, in doing all of that, God's mighty hand was present. The Bible tells us, you know, the, 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 the spirit of the Lord was upon him. God's mighty hand was present, yet it did not come with fireworks. It did not come with the kind of fireworks that the people saw on Mount Sinai, it did not, that's why the Jews missed it. It just didn't, how can this be the display? Yes, we are seeing some miracles, but, but you know what happened? The, the task collectors, the, the prostitutes, the, you know, the down and out, they could see a mighty display, and they used to say, you know, that they've never seen anything like this before. And they glorified God who had given such great power to them. But the fire sees, they looked at it and they said, no, no, no. This is not how, when God stretches his arm, this is not, it is not just a few miracles, and nobody's died, how can this one be any manifestation of God's power? They remembered how people died in Egypt. You know, no Roman soldiers have died, nothing, how can this be a manifestation of God's power? You know, how you can easily put your own interpretation on scripture and miss it big time. Now let's go and read Isaiah fifty two, so we can put that verse ten into its proper context. Awake, awake, put on your strength, O Zion, put on your beautiful garments, O Jerusalem, the holy city. For the uncircumcised and unglued shall no longer come to you. Shake yourself from the dust. Arise, sit down, O Jerusalem, loose yourself from the bones of your neck, oh captive daughter of Zion. My people went down at first into Egypt to dwell there, then the Assyrian oppressed them with that cause. Now therefore, what have I here, says the Lord, that my people are taken away for nothing. Those who rule over them make them well, says the Lord, and my name is blasphemed continually every day. Therefore, my people shall know my name, therefore they shall know in that day that I am he who speaks. Behold, it is I. How beautiful upon the mountains are the feet of, of him who brings good news, who proclaims peace, who brings glad tidings of good things, who proclaims salvation, who says to Zion, your God reigns. The watchmen shall lift up their voices, with their voices they shall sing together, for they shall see eye to eye. When the Lord brings back Zion, break forth into joy, sing together, you waste places of Jerusalem. For the Lord has comforted his people, he has, the Lord has comforted his people, he has redeemed Jerusalem. The Lord has made bare his holy arm in the eyes of all the nations, and all the ends of the earth shall see the salvation of our God. Now, this passage you may be familiar with. Behold, my servants shall deal prudently, he shall be exalted and extolled and be very high. Just as many were astonished at you, so his visage was marked more than any man, and his form more than the sons of men, so shall he sprinkle many nations. Kings shall shut their mouths at him, for what had not been told them, they shall see, and what they had not heard, they shall consider. So this passage begins by telling, you know, with, with admonition to Jerusalem. Um, and it says, wake up, awake, put on your strength, put on your beautiful garments, Jerusalem. In other words, the time of your mourning is over, wake up, this, the time of your salvation is here. Dress, dress properly, put on the clothes, you know, put away your sack clothes and in the clothes of mourning, put on bright clothes before the time of your salvation is here. This is the context, so this is really talking about salvation. The way in the Old Testament, they would take something that was happening there and then, that the people were concerned about, like being in captivity in, in, um, say, in, in Babylon, although in Isaiah's days that hadn't happened yet, or being oppressed by the, the Assyrians. All those things would have been what the people were concerned about. And they would have been seeking consolation for that. And but whilst Isaiah was talking to them about some consolation, boom, he would take, he, he took them to, to the ultimate consolation, which is the ultimate salvation. Um, and there, in the latter part of that chapter, it begins to describe Jesus' earthly ministry. My servants shall deal prudently, he shall be exalted and extolled, he shall be high and be very high. Just as many were astonished at you, so his visage was marked more than any man, and his form more than the sons of men, so shall he sprinkle many nations. Sprinkle with what? He's making, you know, a reference to a ceremony that Moses performed in the Old Testament, where he sprinkled on the day of Ataman, sprinkled the people with blood, and, you know, made a covenant between them and God. And here he's talking about how he will sprinkle, Jesus, of course, his, his own blood is what he, he, he uses to sprinkle us. Now, Isaiah fifty two and fifty three really shouldn't be, have been separated, certainly not in the place that it was separated. By the way, if you didn't know that, the chapters and the verses came in much, much later, I think, and it's like thirteenth century or something like that. So they came in much later, and they are helpful, because now it's easier to remember Bible passages. In Jesus's day, they didn't have chapters and verses. So that's why when you read in the New Testament, you read quotations of the New Old Testament, they will say somewhere it's written, or in Isaiah it's written, because they didn't have those sort of verses. Now, Isaiah fifty two ends and Isaiah fifty three begins, but when you be, when you read Isaiah fifty three, you'll discover really, the, the, there's a theme that begins with the, at the, at the tail end of Isaiah fifty two, talking about a servant, that servant that, you know, we, we just read about. So let's read Isaiah fifty three. Who had believed that report, and to whom is the arm of the Lord revealed? Remember the arm of the Lord that we read about in Isaiah fifty two? He's talking about, so who, who has believed that report and to whom has this arm? The arm, the power of God doing works, bringing the salvation, to whom has he revealed? For he shall grow up before him as a tender plant and as a root out of a dry ground. This is going back to the servant, who shall deal prudently, who, whose visage was marked more than the sons of men. Remember, in Isaiah fifty two, let me take you back there. Behold, my servants shall deal prudently, he shall be exalted and be very high. This is the servant they're talking about. He had not formed no comeliness, and when we shall see him, there is no beauty that we should desire him. He is despised and rejected of men, a man of sorrows and acquainted with grief. And we hate it, we hate acid where our faces from him. He was despised and we esteemed him not. Surely he had born our griefs and carried our sorrows, yet we did esteem him stricken, smitten of God and afflicted. But he was wounded for our transgressions, he was bruised for our iniquities, the chastisement of our peace was upon him, and with his stripes we are healed. All we like sheep have gone astray, we have turned everyone to his own way, We have turned everyone to his own way, and the Lord hath laid on him the iniquity of us all. He was oppressed and he was afflicted, yet he opened not his mouth. He is brought as a lamb to the slaughter and as a sheep before his she- his shareas is done, so he opened not his mouth. He was taken from prison and from judgment, and who shall declare his generation? He was cut out, he was cut off, sorry, out of the land of the living, for the transgression of my people was his stricken. And he made his grave with the wicked and the rich in his death, because he had done no violence, neither was any deceit in his mouth. Yet it pleased the Lord to bruise him. He had put him to grief. When he shall make his soul an offering for sin, he shall see his seed, he shall prolong his days. And the pleasure of the Lord shall prosper in his hand. He shall see of the travail of his soul and shall be satisfied. By his knowledge shall many righteous, uh, by, by, my righteous servants, sorry, justify many. For he shall bear their iniquities. Therefore I will divide him a portion with the great, and he shall divide a spoil with the strong, because he had poured out his soul unto death, and he was numbered with the transgressors, and he bared the sin of many, and made intercession for the transgressors. I'm going to be gradually wrapping up, so I don't throw too much information at you. But Isaiah fifty-three is a profound passage in the Old Testament. Because even, even without the Gospels, Matthew, Mark, Luke and John, if a person were to read Isaiah fifty-three with a sincere heart and look at the historical event of Jesus's death, there's no way that he won't come to this truth. So much so that you know that in many synagogues today, Isaiah fifty-three has been banned, they don't read it. In, in the synagogues, they will read Isaiah, the book of Isaiah, get to fifty-two, then jump to fifty-four. They don't read Isaiah fifty-three. And if you go on YouTube, you'll find videos of Jews who came to faith the day they read Isaiah fifty-three. Whether they read Isaiah fifty-three, there was no way they could not see the Messiah has already come. Because who else could this passage be describing? Who is this person that suffered so much so as to sprinkle many and to justify many? He, this man was the embodiment of the sacrificial lamb. And it takes us to the, 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 um, the ordinance of the day of atonement, described in Luke, you know, Luke, Leviticus chapter sixteen, I think. That whole chapter describes the day of atonement, is the most solemn feast of the Jews. It's called Yom Kippur. On that day, you know, nothing, everything comes to stand still. There are videos of the streets of, of, of Israel, not just Jerusalem, on Yom Kippur. Nothing works. It's just everything comes to a soundstill. This was the day when Jesus's death was enacted in the Old Testament. You see, the Passover carries some of the elements of his death. But the feast, the, 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 the feast of atonement, that one or probably the day of atonement is probably how it's described. That one is so solemn, let me explain to you what happened on that day. That day, the high priest would choose two lambs. You know, and one of those lambs would be called the scapegoat and, uh, and the other, in fact, it were two, two, I said two lambs, they were from goats, so there were two kids. One called the scapegoat and the other one would be the sacrificial one. And the, the high priest, before they, they would s- look at this, examine these animals, make sure that they were without blemish. Then he would lay his hand on one of those goats, the, the, the scapegoat, and confess the sins of the people, after which the goat would be then let loose to go and roam the wilderness. Then they would take the sacrificial one and slay it, and he would make atonement for the people in the most holy place. He would take the blood of the goat into the most holy place. That was the only time he went into the most holy place in the temple, once a year. And before he went, he had to make a sacrifice for himself, a sacrifice for himself, before he was then worthy to take the blood to go and make atonement for the people. And the image, the, the idea there was that the sins were confessed and put on this one, then this one went and died and his blood was, you know, used to, um, make atonement and for the sins of the whole nation. The whole nation, just one goat, its blood was for the whole nation and brought forgiveness to the whole nation. So they did not joke with that sacrifice, that, that, um, um, that, um, that whole ceremony, that whole ordinance. To this day, it carries a huge importance. Any Jew who had been through and lived through it and seen how one animal bore the suffering of everybody, when he came and he read this, it was just a matter of time before, if they were sincere, before they gave their life to Christ. But of course, there are some who have become hardened, who have their own interpretation for this passage, that they will take time and show you how it doesn't apply to Jesus. But let's quickly go through it and see, uh, uh, some of the elements here that will show you that it's Jesus. He says, first of all, he shall grow up before him as a tender plant and as a ru- root out of a dry ground. What does that actually mean? Remember that Isaiah was using imagery, talking about the stem of Jesse and the branch going out and all of that, okay? So when they're talking about a tender plant and the root out of a dry ground, it's figurative. But he's trying to show you that it's going to grow out of an unlikely place. Because a root springing out, a prefer moist, you know, nice place, but here, dry ground. So what does that gra- dry ground, you know, apply to? The most unlikely place to have been, to have grown up and to have, you know, um, been associated with, Galilee. When, when the Pharisees discovered Jesus from Galilee, they said, can anything good come? Even Jesus's own disciples, one of Jesus's disciples, asked that question. He said, can anything good come from Nazareth? So the most unlikely place, the most, that's where it pleased God, that that's where, exactly where he should grow up. He was born in Bethlehem, but his whole life is painted in that very, the, 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 you know, the most unlikely place. So they had no form, no comeliness, not just talking about beauty, talking about beauty. There's no form, there's no beauty. And when we shall see him, there is no beauty that we should desire him. You see, in the Bible, when people who looked good, the Bible talks about it, you know, openly, about, you know, how they were, you know, how they were good looking. Jesus, what, people weren't attracted to him because of his appearance. They weren't attracted to him is because of what he had to say. That's what Jew people. Bible says he's despised and rejected of men, a man of sorrows and acquainted with grief. Some of this would be relating to his actual death, you know, on the, on the cross. But he, all the Hebrews tells us that he endured a great contradiction of sinners. If you go and read Matthew's Gospel, as, um, in particular, you will, Matthew has collected all the clashes with the Pharisees there. And you see, they antagonized him, they would, they would set traps for him, you know, to make his life difficult. We know that his own family, at some point in the Gospel according to Mark, Mark, they came and they wanted to drag him away from the work that he was doing because he was making a nuisance of himself, as far as they were concerned. In John's Gospel, John chapter seven, at the time of the feast of the tabernacles, everybody was heading south, you know, to Jerusalem. So they asked him, are you not going? Nobody that wants to be popular hides away like you're hiding. You know, they were not, and the Bible goes on to say, even his own brother did not believe in him. So, I mean, that alone will be enough for many of us to struggle. Imagine being in ministry and your, your loved ones, the, the closest people, they, they don't believe in what you are doing, they don't really believe that you are who you, you say you are. I mean, can you imagine how invalidating that is? We make big prejudices out of these things. But when we read it in the scriptures, like, oh, they, they didn't believe. No, he lived with them, but they didn't believe in what he was doing, you know? So there's so much that the, you know, the gospel writers could have really fleshed out in relation to Jesus's day-to-day suffering and challenges. But as little, there's, there's no fortune to make us know that, you know, yes, he wasn't a morose person going about looking miserable, but he did endure sinners who were coming at him to try and chip him up. Okay, he says, we hid our faces from him, he was despised and we esteemed him not. This will probably have found his fulfillment at the cross, where, you know, they all deemed him to have been stricken by God, and he said, if you are who you say you are, come down from the cross and we will believe. So I know that time is fast, but and I will find myself rushing through. So I'm just giving you a slight foretaste. When we come back next week by God's grace, where we'll be then, you know, really zero in on Isaiah fifty-three and fresh it out so that we can get more out of this. This, this book is, this chapter in the Bible, of the Bible is incredibly important. When the Eunuch, the Ethiopian Eunuch, do you remember him? He was returning to Ethiopia from Jerusalem because he had attended a feast there and he was on his way back. When the Holy Spirit was spread to Philip, told him to go and meet this guy. And he went, you know, actually the spirit carried him there, then the spirit told him to, when he saw the, the, the man reading the Bible, he, 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 you know, the spirit told him to go and attach himself to, to the chariot. So he went there and what did he find him reading? Isaiah fifty-three. Isaiah fifty-three is a very powerful pa- passage that really depicts Jesus's death, his sufferings that brought us our salvation. And as we've said last week, we really want to zero in on Jesus's sufferings because that's where the power lies. Good. So let's see who else, who is still on the call. Welcome, Fred, and Irene, you joined us as well. Yes, earlier we were saying that, um, uh, our Friday, um, meeting time doesn't seem to be working for people for whatever reason, so we might have to reconsider it. Um, maybe, maybe you have an update, uh, uh, you know, that subject. But that notwithstanding, I would like to hear what your thoughts are on what we've been talking about today, anything you've learned that you'd like to share with us, or if you have questions, then please feel free to, to voice them. We have, for us a quick roundup, we have been talking about basically Isaiah's prophecies. And we've shown how Isaiah is quite unique in, 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 in all of the Bible, in the number of prophecies that he was, that he, he, um, he uttered about the Messiah. And, um, i- it's, it's just incredible, going all the way from his ancestry to his birth, to his ministry, to the miraculous nature of his ministry, you know, all of that Isaiah prophesied about. But then we zeroed in on the, the twist in the salvation message, that the salvation message or, or the whole message about Jesus's coming, uh, there were few twists, you know, and Isaiah prophesied about those as well, you know, um, so uh, that's what we've been talking about today. Good. Anybody wants to go first? Okay, Charity, do you want to go first? I abandon my floor, Charity. I told you that's one to go first, that's why he's quiet.
Well, I don't have any questions today.
Okay.
Uh, I just enjoyed, you know, I was just, um, enjoying, you know, listening.
Okay.
I think that I, you know, like you said, there, I was thinking about the fact that, you know, eh, Jesus was, okay, like you said, did you have? There was nothing so attractive except for what he carried, like. And then from where he was born and everything. And the Jews, I mean, sometimes what we expect to see is not how good, that because, y- you know, so, someone once said that an angel can even stand before you when you not realize it's an angel. Mm-hmm. Because, oh, God will be talking to you and you, because you didn't hear any echo. Like, you know, it wasn't God. And we expect to see, you know, miraculous things, grand things and all that. So it's even a lesson to us that in the little things, God is there and you can see the power of God in everything around us. So I, I've, I've really, I'm, I know that next week I'll have questions.
We'll be waiting for your questions.
Okay, God bless you.
Okay, good. Irene, do you want to go next? Anything to share with us? Any updates? Hey, Deputy Class Referee is, um, it's going quiet on me. Okay, I may come to you, Fred, anything to share with us today?
Hello, good evening.
Evening, good evening.
Oh, child, sorry, sorry. I've just been traveling from one place to the other. That's why I wasn't able to join.
I see.
But I just settled again.
Good.
But, um, overall grace message, um, I just love Isaiah chapter fifty-three. A very long time, I listen to that passage every time I sleep. I just kill Isaiah fifty-three on audio. And, um, I guess, um, refreshing, very refreshing. Um, somehow God always, um, letting us know how Jesus identified with the rejected things, um, the broken ones. He identifies so much, he thinks of them so much that he identifies with them to let them with him. He is the one. Even he told some people, they, um, you saw me hungry in prison and now you did not feed me, clothed me, take me, um, just as you did not do for them, did not do for me. Always identifying with the downtrodden.
Mm-hmm.
Very refreshing passage. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. And finally, um, Pacey, Reverend, uh, anything to share with us?
Uh, no, sir. Um, just enjoying what you've been teaching us. Um, no, there isn't anything.
Okay, no worries. So, um, yes, I mean, today's lesson is kind of, um, different, but it's kind of good for foundation. Laying, laying some of the foundations so that, you know, when we start focusing more on the New Testament, we already have the fire, the Old Testament foundation, we have something to draw upon. Um, and these things, they, you know, even when you don't get any sort of new revelation, it's important that we restate these things because this is the price that was paid for our salvation. This is, this is the price that we can never forget, the price that was paid. Okay, so thank you all very much for coming and we shall hopefully meet again next, next Friday by God's grace.